Good evening and welcome to the August tenth, twenty seventeen, meeting of the Kern County Planning Commission, which I will call to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Mr. Louis?
Here.
Mr. Babcock?
Here.
Ms. Garcia?
Ms. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Oviot?
Mr. Denny?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Thank you. Item B is Commissioner member announcements or reports. Do we have any? Okay. Item C is approval of the July twenty seventh, twenty seventeen meetings. You've all received copies. Are there any suggested corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item D is cases withdrawn or requests for continuances. I see we have none on the agenda this evening. Item E is the consent calendar, and I see, again, we have none on the agenda this evening. It takes us to item F, the public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address this commission on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda but that we have jurisdiction over. Would anyone like to take advantage of that? State your name, and you have two minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Phil Rudnick, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the airport valet express bus service that we operate now in the fourth year to LAX for all the residents of Kern County. I want to tell you that the service provides absolutely free transportation for anyone in our active military from the day one. We take children up to ten years old with their parents for free, and if there's a dependent adult that needs help, either to or from the airport, we allow a chaperone to go with them at no charge. We're pleased to serve the county of Kern, and we trust that if there's any questions or any additional information that we need to have to better serve you, you'll let us know. In the meantime, just know that our company motto is "Always with community in mind," and that's the way we operate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rudnick. This takes us to item G, continued cases. Item number one. Who is handling that this evening?
Commissioner Sprague. I think I have a microphone that works.
Commissioner Babcock.
I'm still correct, Commissioner Sprague. I should have said Commissioner Babcock.
That's all right.
We have two cases tonight. The first case we have is a continued case that was previously scheduled for your consideration earlier, and this is a conditional use permit, case number eleven MAP seventy-seven. Our applicant is Cal Center LLC by LAV Pinnacle Consulting and Engineering. Our request is a conditional use permit to allow a three-day-long event festival up to eight times per year in the E, which is an exclusive agriculture, CHPD, that's the Highway Commercial Precise Development Combining, C2PD, General Commercial Precise Development Combining, and the M1PD, Light Industrial Precise Development Combining Districts. Our project site is two hundred and fifty-five acres, for which Mr. Roque Nino will be putting up a map here first. I'll also note while that is coming up that with me tonight I have Alexa Kozlowski, who is the staff planner who worked on this. I do not believe Ms. Kozlowski has been here before? Once? Twice?
Four.
Four times, she says. Funny, I always thought that was Mr. Nino sitting there. In any event, she is the staff planner assigned to this particular project and has devoted a tremendous amount of time in reviewing and analyzing this particular project. Again, Mr. Nino has put up an aerial photograph that shows our project site. We're essentially dealing with six parcels of land that contain a variety of zone classifications that total two hundred and fifty-five acres. There are three roads that triangulate this particular site. We have Seventh Standard Road along the southern portion. We have Buttonwillow Drive, and we also have Wasco Way on the other side. This is also adjacent to the Interstate Five corridor. Two of these roads are major arterial highway alignments. The other is a secondary collector alignment. These major alignments are a hundred and ten feet wide at ultimate build-out, while the Wasco Way, which is a secondary collector, typically is ninety feet, but it's been reduced to seventy-five feet by the plan. So we have a piece of triangulated property surrounded by three substantial roads as planned for in the future. In nineteen eighty-eight, the Board of Supervisors adopted the Cal Center specific plan and certified an environmental impact report prepared for that plan. It was essentially for the phased development of highway and service commercial uses on the site. More recently, in July of two thousand sixteen, there was a precise development plan nine, MAP seventy-seven, that was approved, and it authorized the construction of a convenience market with associated fuel islands and fast food restaurant. There was also a truck maintenance shop and a drainage sump, in addition to two future or some future developments in the form of retail buildings, a restaurant, and a hundred and twenty unit motel, all across the various commercial map codes and zone classification. Staff notes that while this PD plan has been approved, to date, no building permit has been issued for its construction. The applicant at the present time has come forward with a request, again, for the operation of a music event and festival at this location, to be three days long in each instance, no more than eight times per year on the project site. Essentially, they are looking at four events with up to forty-five thousand attendees per day and four events at sixty-five thousand attendees per day. On page two of the staff report that was given to your board, the event season is supposed to be between, as proposed, the months of March to July and October and November of each year. No festivals are to be held, as proposed, in the months of August and September. Each festival operator would temporarily use the site for festival setup and preparation. All equipment, structures, and utilities would be brought to the site and assembled by the festival operator approximately two weeks in advance of each planned event, and then would be removed from the site during and after the event's conclusions, usually within a week after each event's final day. There are no permanent buildings proposed to be constructed to implement the conditional use permit. On page two of the staff report, it's also noted that in the Kern County zoning ordinance, there is no specific music event venue identified in the ordinance as an allowed or conditionally permitted use. Each of these zone districts, however, contain provisions for large assemblies of people. There are also provisions within the zoning ordinance, specifically Section nineteen point oh eight, point oh eight five. It's called the alternative to determination of similar use, that allows the director to allow for the processing of a use under a conditional use permit, provided that the establishment of the use is consistent with the provisions of the zoning ordinance and is not inherently incompatible. Based on that foregoing, the planning director has concluded that it would be reasonable to process and consider an event venue in the above-zone districts. Again, we're looking at the A, the M1, the C2, the CH out of this site, by processing a conditional use permit in accordance with the provisions of the chapter for conditional use permits. Now, the site plan that Mr. Nino has up basically shows an area of which ninety acres in size would accommodate five or more stages, a carnival area, multiple vendor and concession areas, security, first aid stations, shade areas, and a general store area. The area, the venue also provides for overnight camping areas. That would be immediately to the north of the site, as shown by Mr. Nino on the map. So this is set up for tent camping and overnight parking, either in recreational vehicles or vehicles associated with the tents. The applicant is proposing to put natural grass on the site over the course of the year and establish a green belt of trees and shrubs around this property. Once that's established, it would be irrigated by drip irrigation system to be maintained. Other materials would be brought to the site for surfacing in the form of gravel or asphalt paving, depending upon their usage, such as road aprons and bus depots. Those heavy areas are going to get a substantial amount of wear if this project is approved. They're also utilizing other materials for dust control where necessary. Gypsum is also proposed to be used in the designated parking and maneuvering areas prior to each event. Page three of the staff report reiterates that all festival structures, services, and utilities, such as wastewater and refuse for each festival, will be conveyed to the site, managed during the event, and removed by the event festival promoter or other responsible party. Each festival operator will be contractually required to implement the festival operating requirement. These are referred to as FORs, established by the festival site manager, which include provisions for traffic and parking management, bus, and other activities. So essentially, the applicant has put together a set of FORs. These FORs are instructions for holding an event there related to both on- and off-site activities that each event holder would have to abide by, should your commission consider the approval of this project. Obviously, these FORs, since they're project design features, would also be included as conditions of approval to ensure that a project, if approved, was implemented as One of the significant issues that we looked at in evaluating this project was traffic and parking. The zoning ordinance requires that parking be provided for projects on-site. Pages three and four of the staff report go in to explain the attendance at these types of facilities and how the various types of design features included in this project, from the RV camping, the tent car camping, the day parking, the VIP parking, and the bus shuttles, was calculated to determine that there would be sufficient parking for not only the attendees but all the support service staff that was to come with this operation. Staff believes that after going through this and then recognizing that not all individuals will be driving personal vehicles to this site, that some will be using other forms of transportation, such as Uber, Lyft, shuttle buses, and things of that nature, that sufficient parking will be provided on-site for this type of development. Staff has also noted that there was another project request, similar to this one, that was considered, which I'll be discussing here in the future, that required a different amount of parking in its calculation. And in doing so, I believe the calculations that we've come up with tonight on this particular project are a little bit more detailed and were facilitated to help identify the amount of traffic that could be envisioned in this area should this project be implemented. So essentially, based on that, we do believe that as designed and as properly conditioned, the issue of having sufficient parking on-site for this number of individuals can be accommodated under the zoning ordinance. The similar case that we had was another project that was approved in nineteen ninety-six. It was actually for a Lollapalooza concert that was proposed to be held in August third and fourth of that year in the A-zone district. It was approximately seven miles northwest of the project site at the Buttonwillow Raceway Park. That was a project that your commission considered two weeks ago as a modification of it as it was seeking an expansion. At that particular project site, they were looking at having an estimated fifty thousand spectators to be there, and they required parking be provided at one space for four attendees, or essentially at twenty-five percent. The parking that staff has utilized is more at a ratio of approximately between one from three to three and a half for every car parking space. In processing this request, on page six of the staff report, it's noted that there was a project review meeting held in April of this year, and with that, county staff from the Public Works Department, the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, the Environmental Health Service Department, and the Planning Department all sat down with the applicant's management team to discuss concerns. Those concerns ranged from their actual ability to manage this type, what kind of experience did they have, and I believe the applicant will be providing further testimony to the numbers and types of events that their management experience has given them. We also looked at security and law enforcement. We looked at emergency services provisions, given the number of people that would be in attendance and the number of days they would be there. We looked at traffic considerations, and we also looked at the Fire Department considerations. And from that meeting, I believe we got a general feel for the project itself, and by the same token, became somewhat familiar with the management team that was proposing this request. And in doing so, we started the early communication on how we could evaluate this project. Page seven of the staff report also identifies a report that was submitted with the project. It was a regional economic impact evaluation, and I'll note that there was an addendum handed out to your commission, and in it, the applicant's request has been revised downward from a maximum of eighty-five thousand spectators, which was in the original report that was handed out to you, to sixty-five thousand. There are still eight events proposed, four at forty-five thousand and four at sixty-five thousand, but as a result of that, it did change the economic numbers and the benefits to be derived. And I note in the staff report that this projection includes both direct and indirect economic impacts, but does not count for any potential festival-related jobs which may be created as a result of these events. In processing this request, we notified all the surrounding property owners within a thousand feet of the project site, in addition to affected agencies and county departments. As of the preparation of the staff report, we had twenty-seven comment letters that came in. These comment letters are attached to the Planning Commission report. There were comments that were received, again, from the Fire Department, the Health Department, the Public Works Department, Agricultural and Measurement Standards, Department of Conservation, Kern County Superintendent of Schools, and I will note, lastly, the Board of Directors from the Northwest Kern Resources Conservation District. With the exception of the latter and those from the Agricultural and Measurement Standards Department, which did not basically advocate one way or another, none of the agencies actually advocated one or the other, but a number of them raised comments or concerns. Staff believes that these concerns have been addressed in the staff report, should your commission consider approval of this request through the recommended conditions of approval. I would note that the Northwest Resource Conservation District basically stated that the surrounding lands for this site were agricultural. They believed that, as a result, these normal agricultural operations surrounding the site include chemical spraying, both air and ground, and slow-moving farm equipment. And based on that, they said that this area would not be conducive to accommodating thousands of people crowding into a location, bringing heavy traffic, trash, vandalism, and trespassing onto adjacent agricultural properties. They indicated in their comments that this type of venue would be better suited in an in-and-out-of-the-way area, where impacts to normal agricultural operations would be minimal at best, and the impact to the human element would also be nonexistent. So in essence, as I'm trying to state here, is they were the first agency that came in and noticed or expressed comments or concerns for which they did not believe there were conditions of approval that could address those comments or concerns, unlike the other agencies. With regard to the Kern County Department of Agriculture, they indicated, again, that if approved, this project would create a new sensitive receptor for the purposes of pesticide application, and that the department's general pesticide permit conditions would require a quarter-mile buffer around the project site over which application-restricted materials by air would be prohibited. Furthermore, although the department would not impose additional restrictions on the ground application of pesticides, it would be necessary to mitigate any potential effects from those pesticide applications during events, but they did not specify how. The State Department of Conservation indicated that the parcels that configure this site are identified as prime soil. The best-quality farmland is defined by the Department of Conservation's mapping and monitoring program. The department is concerned that the events would impact the current and future agricultural use of the land and requests to answer how these impacts would be mitigated. Lastly, the Superintendent of Schools, as far as an agency, stated the project would have no impact on their facility so long as the statutory school fees were collected. After the agency comments, we received ten comments in opposition from surrounding area farming operations. Pages nine through the top portion of twelve are a number of comments from the Farmers Cooperative Gin, Inc., Parsons Farms, Jane Parsons, Fred Paula Farms, Dawn and Catherine Paula as Diamond P Farms, Jay Croker of Star Family Farms, Tracy Ranch, Inc., the Buttonwillow Land and Cattle Company, the Goose Lake Holding Company, and Monica Slicker, President of Vince Dusters. All expressed concerns, while not identical, very similar in that the establishment of this use at that location would have a dramatic and significant effect on the agricultural activities in that area. And while they're identified for your commission's reading, the simplest way I could summarize is that they believe that the introduction of the number of individuals to that area would cause a number of effects, starting first with traffic congestion, especially given slow-moving farm vehicle equipment in the area. They also expressed concerns about the applications of pesticides and fertilizers, the perception of individuals who might be in the area with regard to, let's say, Vince Dusters spraying in the area, with the perception that they might think that they were being sprayed with pesticides or other chemical applications when they had not been. The inability to fertilize or properly apply pesticides because of this sensitive receptor, essentially having to change from aerial to ground applications and how that would affect their operations, the timing of when they could apply these types of materials, essentially the interruption of their workday and their harvesting times were of great concern to each and every one of these. They also expressed concern by the creation of dust, by traffic, and how it could affect the tree and nuts in the area. They also expressed concern with regard to trash, vandalism, and trespassing, just to characterize as best I could. On pages twelve of the staff report, there were also comments received in support. I believe there were a total of eight at that time. It's my understanding that we have another package that came in that was handed to your commission that had twelve letters in support. The ones that are in the staff report that have been given to you basically are from individuals who indicate that the implementation of this type of project would have long-term positive effect on the community that would outweigh the negative effects, if I was to quote Mr. Davis, former executive director with the Kern County Board of Trade. Others indicated that they would provide benefits to the community in general. Others see it as a wonderful cultural addition in promoting arts and culture to the community. With regard to the comments received, on pages thirteen through fifteen of the staff report, staff attempted to address the issues with regard to chemical spraying restrictions. We also talked about the potential effect on agricultural production, traffic congestion and related concerns, trespassing and liability concerns. Staff believes that we have addressed those concerns to the greatest degree possible, given the information that we have in their record to date, but we will be listening tonight for additional comments as needed. But again, I think we have addressed those in the staff report. We do have representatives here from a number of county agencies who can provide specific answers to your commission, from the Fire Department, from the Public Works Department, specifically the former roads section, to answer any questions or concerns that you Pages sixteen and seventeen of the staff report also identify the other effects that were identified with regard to health and safety and school fees, and again, I believe those have been adequately addressed in the report or can be adequately addressed should your commission approve the project through the recommended conditions of approval. Pages seventeen and eighteen of the staff report discuss the means by which this project was evaluated under the California Environmental Quality Act. When the Board of Supervisors approved the Cal Center specific plan, they adopted an environmental impact report for that project. This particular project used an addendum to that plan, and on page seventeen, the California Environmental Quality Act states that the usage of an addendum is suitable for analyzing a supplemental project, where in essence, we're analyzing the difference between the original analysis and that by the new project. And that is discussed on pages seventeen and eighteen of the staff report. Based on the information we have in the addendum EIR, it has been concluded by staff that there are no new significant impacts proposed by this project that were already not identified in the original EIR for that commercial travel center. Essentially, the impacts that we have identified for the original travel center are essentially the same impacts identified for this festival event, or in essence, in some respects, the festival event will have a lesser impact on the area than the implementation of the travel center. So staff believes that the usage of the addendum EIR is applicable in this particular case and is, has utilized that in its evaluation. Attached to the staff report is also a copy of the mitigation measure monitoring program that reflect the steps necessary to implement the measures from that EIR. And so, as we work towards the conclusion on this, pages nineteen through twenty-one of the staff report reminds your commission of what the five findings are for approval of a conditional use permit. It also explains that, on page nineteen of the staff report, the goals and policies of the Cal Center specific plan and how this project is consistent with that plan, and staff believes that, properly conditioned, this project can be consistent with the Kern County's development standards. The uses, the use proposed is one that's been found to be allowed in the various zone districts encompassed by the project site, subject to obtaining approval of a conditional use permit. And staff believes that, based on the frequency of usage, the amount of available acreage, the sparsity of the sensitive receptors, and the site's close location to a major transportation corridor, it is a reasonable use of the land, subject to making the necessary findings for approval of a CUP. Staff did, however, have a concern with regard to the frequency of usage and the number of months. As previously stated, the applicant is proposing events no more than eight times per year, but they would be between the months of March to July and then the months of October and November. Staff believes that, given the agricultural activities in the area and the temperatures of those particular months, to make the project more compatible with surrounding land uses and to provide the necessary assurances that the project is not materially detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the public, that we believe that the frequency of usage shall be limited to the months of March through May and October through November. And in doing so, have suggested conditions of approval to implement those. As I previously stated, there was an addendum that was prepared for this project that was given to your commission tonight. This addendum provides clarification in the form of the revised economic study that I spoke of. It also provides clarification that, in essence, there is no bus parking on this particular site. The buses are queuing up. It is rec-. It is recommending revision of two of the recommended conditions of approval to address the bus parking and the amount of required parking needed to be provided on-site. It also provides a clarification from the project traffic engineer in response to the concerns raised by the public works department. So it provides a correct summary of the addressing the comments from the public works department. And lastly, it includes clarified Section 15091 findings and Section 15093 statement of overriding considerations, in addition to a letter from Dr. Horace Mitchell of California State University Bakersfield, providing for support for the project itself. So, based on that foregoing information and the revisions, it is staff's recommendation to your commission that it adopt the Section 15091 findings, Section 15093 statement of overriding considerations, adopt the mitigation measure monitoring program, approve the conditional use permit subject to the revised recommended conditions, and adopt the suggested findings set forth in the attached draft resolution. This completes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Mr. Sprig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several questions of staff that I need to get clarified that weren't clarified in the staff report or the past environmental impact report on this application. First, I'd like to say that I did get a call from Mr. Bill Tracy of Button Willow regarding this project, and we went back and forth before I finally talked to him. He told me he was going to be at the meeting tonight, and I asked that he make his comments in public at the hearing tonight. I also talked to Mr. Brandon Martin, Chief of Staff for Supervisor Couch. Very briefly, Mr. Couch was out. He didn't really have any opinions, wished the staff and as well as the planning commission well. As he's a former planning commission, he understands the importance of this particular project, and I just wanted to reveal that. Those are the only two people that I talked to regarding this application. But, Mr. Denny, the CUP and the staff report and the application, there was nothing in it regarding the term of the CUP asked for tonight. Usually, when we do events like this, or if we're doing a truck parking thing or whatever, we'll put a cap limit of like one to three to five years. Is this CUP got a term limit on it? In other words, can they have eight events forever? Or is it for like five years? What's staff's opinion on where that should go?
As presently written, it is a permanent entitlement for eight events per year.
Forever?
It's a permanent entitlement for eight events per year.
So what if problems develop out there that are insurmountable? And they have a CUP? Is it subject to complaints from surrounding property owners or the sheriff's department or the highway patrol about the problems that have been created with these types of events?
There are two ways that they could lose their entitlement to operate should it be approved. Yes, the first one would be revocation through noncompliance with the adopted conditions of approval, and that applies to any conditional use permit. Any conditional use permit which does not comply with this adopted conditions of approval can be revoked by the county through a public hearing process. The second way in which a conditional use permit could lose an entitlement is through lack of usage. If a CUP, and it's stated in there, if a CUP is not utilized for a period of one year, it can lose its entitlement once it's vested. If they haven't utilized it within one year of approval, they would need to ask for an extension of time before it went operational. So yes, if at some point in time it was approved and they had one event every year for five years, they would still be vested. At such point in time that they did not have any event, they would have an issue that would need to be resolved with the county because they would be on track to essentially have abandoned the project due to nonusage.
And it would be up to them to make that application to the planning department?
The county does not track that as that is correct.
Is it possible that we could put tracking on it?
Yes.
And that could be another condition added tonight?
It would be, yes, we could add another condition to it. We would already have requirements presently for road mitigation, I believe, and tracking improvements to the site or degradation of area roads. I believe they're already required to submit video surveys. So obviously, if there was no video survey turned in for a particular year, there would be no event, so it could be easy to determine.
And the Kern County Roads Department would stay in communication with Caltrans and the highway patrol and monitor the road and traffic conditions and the accidents that could happen out there?
As it's presently set up, this project will require implementation of traffic management plans for each type of event, and that is a coordinated activity, it's my understanding, between the county and the state of California. If we're going to put in long-term monitoring, I think it would be appropriate to put in a separate condition of approval to address that rather than rely on inference from an activity. And we could simply have an applicant submit something on a yearly basis to the planning department to affirm that it's still in active operation.
Can you make note of that for later? And then also, I'm concerned about types of events under this CUP that could be had on the premises, such as, let's say, the largest west coast swap meet ever. Could engage them to let them use this property for a week or two-week periods monthly. Does that fall within the purview of this CUP? Or would they have to make an application for each particular event, different types of event? I'm just asking a question is, like, major swap meets as an example, that would want to operate there. Would they have to come back into the planning department commission, or is that approved with this CUP?
This CUP would not allow swap meets. Swap meets are specifically identified uses in the zoning ordinance. The only events that are allowed under this project, should it be approved, is a music venue.
Okay. Another question is, I've read this twice, the staff report, the application, and the EIR, just so I covered all the facts. I didn't see where a traffic report was completed at this point. I see reference to traffic counts and things like that. Is there a traffic report now, or is it forthcoming in the next week or months or whatever before they implement their first music festival?
A traffic study has been performed, and it is continuing to go undergo, my understanding is to undergo review through the county and Caltrans. I could have county public works staff clarify that for your commission's benefit.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like that if the rest of the commissioners would like it also. And also, in reading through this, there seems to be great concerns over the routes for toxic and hazardous waste from Safe Harbor and/or others, which are presently using this particular lateral to get out to the dumping site. And that would be disrupted and rerouted or detoured into other areas, but there's no specific route that I have found yet. And I know prior to this, there was discussion, maybe a couple of years ago, about not taking it through the town of Button Willow or past the elementary school. And I'm wondering if there is a route that's been designated in the event this is approved tonight? Or do they have a plan or will have a plan put together to route these truck drivers through different areas that they may not be familiar with? They're familiar with the present route because they're driving it all the time, but when you change courses with a truck driver and put him somewhere else, or relief drivers put him somewhere else, they're not real familiar with the roadways. I'm concerned about that, so I want to see or would like to hear what the plan is so that there's no one that would be affected by that in the event these events are going to happen there.
I can state first, in the staff report itself and the comments that have been raised, I have only come across one concern with regard to the hazardous shipping, and that was with Clean Harbors. And on page fourteen of the staff report, in approximately the middle of the page, the issue was discussed, and it appears that in conversations that the applicant has had with Clean Harbors, the only potential conflict day that there would be would be on a Friday, and they were looking at resolving that issue. However, that being said, if there were other conflicts that I'm not aware of, I believe that the applicant's traffic engineer is also available, along with county staff, if they have information along those lines, to address that particular aspect. But the only issue that I'm aware of with regard to shipping and potential issues that was raised was with Clean Harbors, and it appears that that issue has been identified and could be resolved relatively easy. But again, should there be others? I believe the applicant's traffic engineer might be the best way to get an answer on that.
Okay. And then you made reference to, in your report, the 50,000 people attending the Button Willow Motocross Raceway at some period in time?
That was an approval that was given in ninety-six. It was a one-time event. It was not held.
It was not held?
It was not held.
I was going to ask if there's a report on any traffic problems or accidents that would happen, but since they didn't have it, that's a moot item. And this is considered by the state to be a prime agricultural soil, as I read in the report as well as the EIR.
The state has mapped this site as a prime soil, but as indicated in nineteen eighty-eight, the Board of Supervisors approved a number of zone classifications that no longer zone it A for agricultural. That decision to take that land out of agricultural production in the long run has already been made by the board. However, presently, the land remains in agricultural production, and until such point in time as it is developed in some manner, the assumption would be is it would remain in agricultural production.
So if they wanted to, if we wanted to press the issue, they wanted to farm the property, would they have to come in and change the existing zones approved by the Board of Supervisors?
They're presently farming it. It's legal nonconforming.
So that's the opinion of the county, they can't force the issue at this point?
They can continue to farm. What will not happen, though, is they're not eligible to put any of this land under a Williams Snack land use contract because it is not resource designated, so they cannot receive reduced taxes.
Okay. And I think that's all I have to ask of you right now, but I'll probably quiz you later.
We're here to listen tonight.
Thank you.
Ms. Poole?
Thank you, Chairman. After hearing staff's presentation, and while I do not think that I have a disposable conflict under the Political Reform Act, out of an abundance of caution in light of my employer's business interests in the area, including the wonderful industrial park, I will be abstaining from considering this item. Mr. Hall, do I need to go in the hallway and wait till Item Two comes up?
No, you do not.
I can sit and listen?
Yes, you can sit and listen.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, did you have comments?
No, I was going to try to get your attention to say Ms. Poole wanted to make that statement earlier was all.
Okay.
We needed to jump up a bit.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is the applicant present? How many people in the audience wish to speak on this item, whether you're opposed or in favor? Would you raise your hand? All right. If you have a group, let's say for an example, that's in opposition, would you consider having a spokesperson for your group that could speak for all of you, or some of you anyway, and same with those that are in support, so we can get through this relatively efficiently? What we'll do is we'll hear from the applicant, then we'll take testimony for those in opposition, then we'll take testimony for those that are in support, and then we'll give the applicant an opportunity for closing comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes, and we ask that you please state your name, spell your last name, and then begin with your comments. Sir?
Good evening, Chairman Babcock and all the commissioners. My name is Daniel Rudnick, R-U-D-N-I-C-K, and my father, Philip, and I own Cal Center LLC. We own this property, and we're the applicants. I'd like to introduce some of my team. The lead civil engineer on the project is Matt Vovilla from Pinnacle Engineering. Lead traffic engineer is John Schuler from Rutgers and Schuler. Sequo Council is Jennifer Hernandez from Holland and Knight. And from On Track Event Management is Mr. Jimmy Engelmann and Mr. John Conway. I think that's everybody. So, well, thank you very much. Really appreciate the opportunity to present our project to your commission. Very excited about it. We've been working on this since, well, since about 2014, early 2014, and we just, this year, really got it all together to bring our project forward. One of the things I wanted to say was that many years ago, in a small farming town called Indio, that not many people visited, a band went down and had a protest concert in 1993 because they thought Ticketmaster was dominating all the venues in the Los Angeles area, and they wanted to get as far away from Los Angeles as possible to see if people would come. And it was a big hit. And a few years later, they had the first Coachella Music and Arts Festival, and now it's the largest in the world. And the community of Indio has never been the same since, and that's in a positive The city of Indio proudly says that the two weekends of the Coachella Festival and the third weekend, what they call Stagecoach, contributes about $700 million to the global economy. Most of it right there in the valley. It's very significant. People come from all over the world, and the little town in 1990 theory was primarily known for date production. So what one county can do, what one community can do, another can do. And we almost did in 1996. So the music festivals are, the big brands are all over the country, quite frankly, all over the world, and California is particularly big on this particular live music experience. Our ranch, we call Cal Center because when we bought it in 1985, there was a monument on the other side of the freeway that said, "This is the population center of California. Half of the people live north and half the people live south." My father and I thought this was very strategic property. We made no secret about our intentions, that we thought that there was something more with that particular land. It was too small to really have a large-scale ranch with economies of scale like many of our other neighbors have. It's a triangle piece of property which, where the fields aren't shaped as efficiently as many of my neighbors' fields are, and it's contiguous to Interstate Five. It has an on-ramp and off-ramp at each end of the property, connected by a frontage road. So shortly after we purchased it, we started the entitlement process, and as Mr. Denny said, we ultimately ended up with a zone change, a specific plan, and a general plan amendment. And we've been working on different commercial projects that we would bring forward on that property ever since, but all the while, we have farmed, intensively farmed it, both my father and I have, and for a few years, we leased it to a neighbor. So we're not strangers to the community. We're not strangers to this community. Everybody knows us. We've been here for a long, long time. And one of the things that is very important to us is the projects that we do, we, my father and I, and people that work with us, it's, there has to be benefits for everybody. Something has to rub off on everybody in this project, in these type of projects. As the economic impact statement from Cal State Bakersfield, the economics department analyzed this, said that if we had eight festivals a year with some very conservative assumptions that we could generate as much as $125 million for the county in economic activity, that's direct, indirect, and induced spending. But it's- But it's interesting because the multiplier that was used is only 1.3. If you, when Mr. Rick Davis speaks, I think he'll say that that's extremely conservative, that when he was doing this type of thing, that they used three, and that was conservative. So this has significantly more upside. This is a project that's going to start out, not at eight projects a year, or eight festivals a year. It's going to start out at one or two, and it's going to grow. And the upside for this particular piece of property, I don't think that there's another 250 acres or 255 acres in Kern County that will require an investment in permanent infrastructure, permanent sewer, permanent water, fire, police, things of that nature, that can generate this much income for the county. The biggest beneficiaries are, in fact, the communities. You cannot do a project like this without having a very tight public-private partnership. That's the only way they work. And if you go to the communities like Coachella, you go to Napa Valley, and you talk to them about Bottle Rock, which is the three-day festival that they have over the Memorial Day weekend, they all tried those, and now they've become the biggest thing in the town, the biggest thing in the county, and they would not, you know, give those music festivals up for anything. And every business that is there benefits, just like they would here. Mr. Engelmann will explain all the busing and the background of On Track Event Management. They manage big events, Super Bowls, major sporting events, music festivals, things where they have to shut down the city of San Francisco in order to have them. And so they know how to deal with conflicts. They deal with Caltrans and the California Highway Patrol every day, managing large events over this state and in other states. So we've got a very experienced team with a proven track record that I think has been, at least, has been very impressive in their, in what they've been able to bring to the table, and they're excited about the fact that they get to get in on the ground floor to create an optimal venue to have music festivals like this, where usually they're brought in after the fact, after somebody's decided that they're, you know, they're going to have one, how are we going to figure out how to make it work? Instead of here, where we have incredible, relatively speaking, transportation infrastructure unlike anything they've seen before, anywhere, in order to move people safely and efficiently. And that's another thing I would like to, I would like to touch on, is that, is that this entire staff report, if I were to distill it down into really two big points, the first would be, number one, which is in every single thing that we've done here, is safety. Safety is number one. If it isn't, if we can't have a safe event, if we can't have the buy-in from the Sheriff's Department, from the Fire Department, from EMS, from the California Highway Patrol, from everybody that is, that brings all their tools to bear on this, then it doesn't work, and it's not sustainable. So we have worked with all those agencies, not the Highway Patrol yet, because we don't have a date yet, and they don't get involved until you do. But, so, we're, we have done an immense amount of work with all the departments to address everything that they could think of. We've gone to other cities where they've had these for many, many years, and we've taken their best management practices, and we've looked at them, and we've beefed them up, and we've tailor-made them for this particular site and for our county, so they work. And this is something that usually doesn't get to happen. It usually happens over a very long period of time. When we first brought this project to Ms. Oviat, she told us that one of the things that she wanted to do is she wanted to have an evolutionary or an adaptive management plan, particularly for traffic or anything like that. So after we held a festival, all the stakeholders would get involved, and we would debrief. We would find out, what did we do right? What did we do wrong? Where did we have a bottleneck? Where did we have a slowdown, congestion, any kind of issue? Whether it's our neighbors, whether it's anybody that this, that this music festival would touch, would be there, and we would, and we would get better. We would, and we would adapt the plan, and we would continue to get better. And that's our plan, and that's, I believe, built into the conditions of approval, Mr. Danny correctly, if I'm wrong with that. That's the way that it's set up, to continually get better and better as we go along. We're not here for a one-and-done thing. We want to have music festivals at this site for 25 or 30 years. We think it's an exceptional opportunity for the county to diversify its economic base and to become much more resilient, and to have people come in from out of town. And this is something that's, that's not discussed in the, in the economic analysis, but I will explain it this way. If you milk a cow into a bucket, okay, the very top part is the cream. Everything else is milk. The kind of revenue that these particular events generate is all cream. It's all the high-dollar tourism, recreation, and travel dollar that's primarily coming in from outside the area, coming into Kern County, into Bakersfield, buying hotel rooms, buying food, buying gas, buying everything that you can imagine, spending money at the festival, spending money getting back and forth, and Monday they leave, and they go home. And we don't have a bunch of permanent infrastructure left that the police or the sheriff has to worry about, that fire has to worry about. We don't have permanent sewer. We have none of those things. Everything rolls in like a big circus, in a sense. It's built out over a period of 10 days to two weeks. They have the festival, and then afterwards, they tear it all down, and they move out, and we have 250 acres of what we plan on planting grass. We also plan on, as Mr. Danny said, having a landscape theme and developing landscaping. So ultimately, we'll, you know, 25 or 30 years, we'll have some big, beautiful trees all over that place and have more shade than we do today. So we have very long-term plans for this project. My father and I are dedicated to making this one of the most successful projects that has been brought forward in Kern County. And we have worked with just about everybody that we can find that has contacted us or has shown some concern. And I have, I have met with, excuse me, many of the, my neighbors are here in opposition to my project, but I think almost every single one of them, either with them or their brothers or their sons, or sometimes both of them and their nephews, I've met with all of them to find out, because I wanted to find out, what were their concerns? What were their fears relative to this project? And they should go find the solutions.
Mr. Rudnick, on that note, could you wind up your comments? We have a lot of people that want to speak tonight. And if we need to bring up your consultants, we'll ask for them.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, in closing, I think what I'd like to say is that, I think the most important thing in a project, particularly when a project like this is trust, and when there's a lot of trust in the room or in the project, people collaborate better, people communicate better, people work with each other. And so, although I think that this, that what I'd ask is, is that our project, you know, be approved, that you trust in, in the depth of detail that the staff has gone into, into helping us develop how this project can be safely and efficiently operated, and it's going to be fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will take testimony for those that are in opposition. Make your way to the front. Take seats in the front. I'd like to get through anyone that wants to speak. Someone come up to the podium, please. State your name for the record and spell your last name.
Hi, my name is Daniel Palla. My last name's spelled P-A-L-L-A. My family is the farm on the whole west side of the project. The whole northeast side of the project, so we represent the majority landowner around this project. I'm a former employer with Melissa Poole at Wonderful Orchards. I am a licensed pest control advisor, so I'm the only one legally here to advise on pest control I'm aware of. Only a licensed applicator. He has a very impressive staff, but not one knows about pesticides, from what I understand, or is licensed to do so. I am the vice president of the local Kern County Pest Control Advisor Association. As you can see on that map, the fields on the other side of the west side of the northeast side of the freeway are triangle pieces. We do farm triangle pieces amazingly. On the whole west side, that is almonds, at about 100 acre, 100 trees per acre. This event's going to be hot. It's going to be miserable, and people are going to, people are going to go to where there is shade, which will be our property. People are going to be trespassing. We're not like a regular store where we can just lock our doors at the end of the night and say, "Nobody's going to come in here tonight. There's an alarm." That's a lot of acres to patrol. We won't be able to patrol at all. People are going to be coming into the field. There's a lot more trees there than will ever be in that piece of property across the street. And what we're going to have issues with that is we're going to have, obviously, general trespassing. We're going to also have food safety issues. Almond trees, which is on the west side of that whole event center, it has a food sanitation requirement, and for those food sanitation requirements, you need to not have trash on the ground. That's a food sanitation. We don't want people to get sick. It's very important in agriculture. Almonds are harvested off the ground after they're shaken on the tree. That'll be an issue. Also, with the amount of traffic there, you will have what's called the Pacific Spider Mite. That will flare up due to the dust. It has to do with the beneficials and the ability for them to eat and find the pest. Once it blows up, you get on what I call the spraying train. Get used to spraying. It's expensive. It's time-consuming, and there's risks to that, natural risks. Pesticides have to be used in a safe manner, or they become dangerous. None of his counsel can legally advise on pest control, pest. After we do a spray job, we have what's called an REI, Restricted Entry Interval. That is a law that states that people are not able to enter that field without the proper safety equipment for a period of time. I guarantee that not one person at the event center will know what a REI is, and they will immediately then trespass into our field, doing whatever illegal activity they want to do, such as drugs or other inappropriate behavior that should not be done in the public. Thankfully, they do in the shade and the trees, which would be our property. Another issue will be, yeah, it's just three days or a few events per year, but I can tell you, at events that I've had at Wonderful Orchards, we've had a crop, an almond crop completely wiped out by an insect called leaf-footed plant bug. It's about a one-inch bug. It does one sting. One sting will destroy that nut. You can imagine how fat, it's a large insect. It moves in fast. It has really no known beneficials that control it, so your only option is to spray. That happens from bloom to shell hardening, which is about halfway through the year. The only person that can cover that ground fast enough, spray rigs are very hard to cover that fast enough, the best option is actually a helicopter or an airplane, because they are able to cover ground fast. This insect can wipe out your prop. I've had whole corners of fields wiped out before we were able to get in there because of other issues in the field. Unlike other people in this room, we don't get a, just a steady paycheck every month. If an insect or a pest comes in and wipes out our field, that's a percent of our income that's lost. It can be lost very, very quickly. One mistake can cause a lot of problems.
Could you wind up your comments, please?
Yes, I can. That's actually my last comment, sir. Do you have any questions? Can advise anything on pests or any questions like that?
Not at this time, but if we do, we'll get ahold of you.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Next speaker, please.
I'm Fred Starr, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Starr and Stark Cotton Growers. We purchased a piece of land right across from the street from the proposed site. We've just finished planting it to almonds and pistachios, and this plan, to me, is nothing but a proposal for disaster. You're talking about people who are not going to drink Coca-Cola and water. They're going to drink hard liquor, and I see they're going to be selling that on the property. And now we have marijuana available for people. If you can imagine inviting neighbors in to your house, that's what you're saying for us. Those are going to be our neighbors. We're going to be there for the next 50, 60, 70, 80 years, and we don't want those kind of neighbors, and we're very adamant about that. And you gentlemen have this prerogative to making the decision on this, and you're going to be making decisions that are our lives, and we want you to consider that seriously. And we've heard a good argument by the proposal that was made, but I think we are farmers, and that's farmland, and they're trying to make it into something else, and I don't think that stands for the right things. To me, there's a corollary draw. Just take, for example, you've got a big, open area around your houses, and somebody wants to put a hog farm there. How are you going to feel? To me, this is a corollary to that. We're talking about something that's devastating to that area, because the traffic is going to be horrendous. The problems with people is going to be horrendous. I see they've dropped their figures from 50 to 85,000, but 35,000 to 65,000 is still a tremendous amount of people to dump onto a piece of farm ground and expect the neighbors around it to survive and live in the fashion we're used to. Thanks a lot for the opportunity to give my little spiel.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If you had any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but I can see you don't.
Next speaker.
My name is Monica Slicker. I am the president of Slick-
Could you spell your last name, please?
S-Lick-Sam. L-I-K-K-E-R.
Thank you.
President of Slicker Flying Service, but we do business as Vince Dusters. I gave the gentleman a diagram. The Cal Center proposed project is in the center. If you look down on the bottom left, you can see our runway is there. The dotted line is the flight path, and then on the proposed area, I put a mark where the main stage would be. So all those people at the event would be watching our airplanes and helicopters flying in and out. I want to, have you kind of imagine, I'm sure many of you have gone down the freeway, and you've had a helicopter or airplane dipping down in the field, kind of next to the freeway, and the first thing you think is, hey, that's pretty cool. And the next thing you know, think is, oh, gosh, I hope he doesn't spray me. Let me hurry and get by, so he doesn't get to me. What many people don't know is we spend 90% of our day to be safe and legal and to do these applications. Our staff notifies the beekeepers. We check adjacent fields to make sure there's nothing that we could harm with what we do spray. We notify the farmer of what we are going to spray and when it's going to happen. The pilot makes sure that the nozzles on the aircraft face downwards so that the spray goes down. They adjust the pressure on that equipment so that when that droplet leaves the aircraft, it does not have momentum. It drops straight down. It doesn't float. They fly the field and turns off and on well into the field, and then he goes around and does the end passes. You probably don't notice the pickup that has a spotter, one of our persons, that will keep the fools who come in, try to drive into the field while we're flying it, and from getting out of their cars to take a picture. You just look and you drive away. Where's the rest of my notes? But now, maybe you know a few more facts that you didn't know before about what our job really is. A festival-goer, there's one person out of 50,000 that comes from out of the valley. There's, you have 50,000 people that don't come from the valley. They're going to watch on that flight line an airplane go by every 20 minutes. Middle of February to the end of March, we are spraying almonds. We spray seven days a week. We spray seven days a week. This year, we sprayed seven days a week, all day. We, from June through August, we spray seven days a week, from four or five in the morning till noon or two o'clock, just depending on what we have. You can imagine a festival goer is facing that stage, they are also watching that airplane go back and forth every twenty minutes. First, they might think it's cool, and then they might think, oh, well, I hope he's not spraying me, what if he gets something on me? Maybe I'm not feeling good, it's day two and day three, and they're not feeling good, and they say something. My concern is, it's gonna have a chilling effect on my business. One day of flying, I lose thirty to fifty thousand dollars if I'm not able to fly. I'm not gonna fly in their quarter-mile zone, I'm not gonna fly in their half-mile zone, but it's always the perception. I know you guys have seen the news, every time somebody gets sprayed, somebody says, "Oh, I got sprayed," they show an airplane flying, flying a field. That's our business, that's our livelihood, we have thirteen people that we support in this valley. So I just, I want an assurance that it won't affect my business.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ma'am, could you come back up? Mr. Sprague has a question.
I have a question. Have you drunk, have you put together air draft analysis for this particular area of your airstrip and where this project is? Like, where does the wind blow from, northeast, or does it blow southeast or southwest?
In the afternoons, the wind usually comes from the northwest. Is that correct? The northwest. My husband's here, he's the pilot. It usually comes from the northwest. It's not that we're spraying there, but it's that we're flying back and forth. But yes, if we flew in that direction, the wind would be pushing whatever back towards that event area.
So that it could draft back. Has there been any analysis done on what the average draft is in a surrounding circumference, like three to five miles?
I don't know. I don't know. I do know that on that runway, I can't take off and land the other direction, because I have power lines to the south. So that's the way I have to go. I could possibly do some kind of research as far as wind and whatnot, but-
Well, drift is a problem for me.
Drift is a problem. And, and we, this is, I'm just talking about the perception of seeing a plane take off and land every twenty minutes. I'm not talking about spraying during the time of that, although you have four thousand employees, you have for three to four weeks ramping up and ramping down employees in that area. I spoke to Glenn Fankhauser from the county ag department. For over a month, that will be a sensitive area, so there will be people there that don't know. And it's possible, yes, we do, to the northeast, we do organic vegetables. My husband sprays those every Sunday morning, just because the crews are working there.
So you have to limit your spraying during the two, the two-week setup period, as well as the one week after? So you're limiting your spraying to surrounding areas for like, a month or a month and a half?
Exactly. In that quarter-mile to half-mile, yes. I won't be able to spray unless there's some kind of emergency plan where the farmers go to the county and say, "Hey, we have to spray, we can't get to it." One example would be, this year, it was so wet, there was so much rain, ground rigs couldn't get into the field, we did a lot more work. Some years, a ground rig can, but this year, that was not possible.
So it's very disruptive from that standpoint.
It is. And like I said, if we're made to stop just because of the perception, "Oh, I don't like that flying," that's thirty to fifty thousand dollars for us.
The insects are still there.
Exactly. They're eating.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Bill Tracy, spelled T-R-A-C-Y. I'm representing the Tracy Ranch Goose Lake Holding Company and Buttonwill Land and Cattle Company. We are primarily an agricultural operation involving livestock and farming in California and Texas, but there's also involved in the hospitality business. We've been in business in Kern County for a hundred and fifty-five years, and we are still family-owned and operated. We know the meaning of sustainable agriculture long before it became a popular phrase. I would like to state that we've had an amicable relationship with the Rudnick family for decades, and in fact, actually done business with a Rudnick family member within the last week. We certainly are in the camp of allowing people to do what they want to do with their land, if that's not gonna affect us adversely, as we feel this, this issue will. We're not opposed to the zoning change, as agricultural ground in question has gone through various zoning changes in the past years, which now include exclusive agriculture, highway commercial, general commercial, light industrial, industrial, and we did not feel that they were incompatible with our area. Our concern is for the safety of our employees traveling the roads during these events. Most of all, most, all of our employees do not live on the farm and travel daily to and from the operation, our operation to work. We fear more, not less restrictions for our farming operations will be the norm in the years to come, and festival events will compound these problems. While the event may not, may only be two or three days, it is clearly spelled out in the setup, that the setup, the event and teardown will involve twenty-four days, times eight events equals a hundred and ninety-two days per year that we will be affected. So we're half a year. The application indicates that during setup and teardown, the project site would not be considered a sensitive area, an aerial application of pesticides would not be affected. But the ag commissioner's letter plainly states, "The general pesticide permit conditions would create a quarter-mile buffer zone surrounding the site, within which applications restricted materials by air would be prohibited during times when the site is occupied." In other words, application will not be allowed even when construction crews are present. And I can tell you, from my fifty-plus years of farming experience, being sometimes only one day late, protecting a crop can spell the difference between profit and gigantic economic losses. Ag and large concentrations of people have never been compatible. We've watched it time and again, whenever cities expand into ag lands, immediately, the city dwellers come forward with complaints of early and late, early morning and late night farming noise, dust, pesticide application, roads congested by slow-moving vehicles, and et cetera. This is not a case of, "Nimby, not in my backyard." It's actually not in our front yard, where we live and that we have lived for our entire life. Local landowners oppose this event, with the exception of Jerry Slough Farming, who entered into an agreement with compensation. Comments in support, with the exception, again, of Jerry Slough Farming Company, have a Bakersfield address, far from the inconveniences created by the festival events. We request a denial of the application, and failing that, we suggest the venue of one event per year. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Babcock, Mr. Louie, and Mr. Sprague, commissioners. My name is Albert Ghilarducci, spelled G-H-I-L-A-R-D-U-C-C-I. I am a farmer, and I travel through the area, and I live in Buttonwill also, have my whole life. I'm also representing Norman Del De Shane, who's president of Supervised Control Service Incorporated. I have a couple extra letters here, and he would like me to read this, if I could, please. He's not able to hear tonight. My company, Supervised Control Service Incorporated, is an agriculture consulting company specializing in crop issues such as insect infestation, disease, nutrition, and weed problems. We work with a variety of crops, such as trees, vines, vegetables, row crops, and forage crops. My former partner, John W. Nicholson, formed Supervised Control Service, Inc. in the late nineteen forties. I have worked in the business full-time since nineteen seventy-two. My company oversees seventy-five to eighty thousand acres annually. Weather, weather plays an important role in my work. Spring storms have significant impact on severity of crop disease. I am constantly watching weather patterns to anticipate the need to make preventive treatments to protect against disease in vegetable crops. It is always better to take preventive measures rather than trying to catch up after the storm event. Many crops are ruined in just a matter of days. Examples are late blight, bacteria specked in tomatoes, late blight in potatoes, downy meal in onions, alternary in carrots, just to name a few. This year, we have experienced severe heat of over fifty days so far this summer. This has caused heavy outbreaks of insects. Ligas has greatly affected many cotton fields. We are already dealing with issues regarding bee notifications and worker reentry interviews for field workers. Many times, we need to treat the field within one or two days after checking it. If fields requiring treatment are located in this proposed sensitive area, this could prevent applications for ten to fifteen days. I anticipate substantial problems as a result of delayed treatment. This proposal could cause growers in the affected area millions of dollars in crop loss, along with lost work for their employees. During harvest season, for many vegetables, we are not permitted to treat Monday through Saturday due to harvest crews out in the fields. Treatments must be made Saturday evening or Sunday when workers are gone. If there is a festival during this time, it would curtail any necessary treatments. I would strongly urge denial of this conditional use permit. Signed, Norman Del De Shane, President of Supervised Pest Control. For myself, standing up here, being a farmer living and driving through that area, it is phenomenal. I would, I would very much interest you, any, to just go out there and spend this tomorrow afternoon, today, or, I mean, tomorrow morning, whatever, look at the traffic. We have tomatoes trucks, we have walnut, I mean, almond trucks going through now, tons of farm equipment, people getting lost off freeway. Trust me, it's a mess. It's a mess already. And I would just really entail that you really consider the, the future of this site. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the hearing. My name is Don Palla, that's P-A-L-L-A, and I want to talk about, well, laid law, Safety Clean, and now it's Clean Harbors, and about the, the toxic truck route that goes to their facility west of Buttonwillow. If you look at the map, it goes, if you get off of the freeway going north, there's Seven Standard Road, and it goes Seven Standard Road to, to Corn Camp Road, and then over to Highway Fifty-Eight, and then to the facility. If you're coming south on I-5, you get off on Buttonwillow Drive or Raleigh Road, and you, you go to Seven Standard Road, and same thing, go west and down Corn Camp. But I'll call it Clean Harbors, 'cause that's what it is now. Clean Harbor's conditional use permit designates one route to their facility west of Buttonwillow. There is no alternative route. An alternative route would require a modification of Clean Harbor's existing conditional use permit. Many, many public hearings were held to discuss the traffic route for these toxic trucks. The staff report, and in fact, what I read and what I'm hearing, infers that Cal Center and Clean Harbor's could arbitrarily change the existing toxic truck route. I'm here to say that, that that would be a violation of Clean Harbor's conditional use permit, and if Clean Harbor's is using a different truck route than that route, then they're actually currently in violation of their permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, my name is Julie Parsons, P-A-R-S-O-N-S, and my family and I farm just to the south of this said property, both sides of Buttonwillow Drive, and then also, we have land on the other side of Interstate Five, coming down in that little triangle corner up to I-5 and Raleigh Road. We, we've been farming there for a lot of years, family farm, you know, have a lot of workers that rely on us for jobs. We spray, we have pistachios on this one side, we have open ground and row crops, vegetable crops, that, it's just, as everybody said, we, when it's time to spray, we have to spray. They take this away from us, and even ground rigs. When we spray in the, in the orchards with ground rigs, it's quite a sight. I mean, there's spray going everywhere, and there's things that our pest control advisors can tell you about inversion layers, or the, you know, even when there's no wind, the pesticides can move around and move. And there's been a lot of instances in Kern County where people have been poisoned for half-mile or more away from this stuff moving in certain times. And it's all things we have to look at on a daily basis, just to get our stuff done. And if we're cut down in this, you know, they talked about a hundred and ninety days out of the year, but it's only seven months they wanna have the festivals, so that's two-hundred-and-ten days, so it's a hundred and ninety days out of two-hundred-and-ten days, we're basically shut down as far as doing any spray, all through the, you know, the whole spring, when, when most of the sprays go on. So we just, you know, we're tied into this little bit of summer, and then through harvest, and then we're kinda out of it. But, and not only that, we, you know, all our, our headquarters is right there. It's within a quarter-mile of this property. All of our equipment, and some of it's big stuff, I mean, takes up more than the road. We gotta get it out of there, we gotta get it across there, we gotta cross I-5, and it's, somebody had said earlier, it's madness with the traffic the way it is now. People are coming off of there, they don't know where they're going, they're, it's, it's just, it's not marked, it never has been marked, and, you know, God forbid you even wanna get on I-5 and, and try to deal with that, and, you know, and just thinking about this traffic kinda come off of there and, and be stopped, and while they're waiting to look through everybody's ice chests and backpack before they can get on this property, and traffic's backed up for ten miles, you know, down I-5, and it's just, it's, it's gonna be terrible for us. It's just, you know, all we wanna do is farm. It's a farming community, we've done it all our lives, our, our sons, our grandsons are coming out there now, and we wanna be here a hundred and fifty years like the Tracy family, and thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name's Jane Parsons, P-A-R-S-O-N-S, and I essentially have a question of logistics. According to the report, because of the known factors, that if we look at Coachella, if we look at some of the other festivals that are held, there are big issues with drug use, there are big issues with sexual predators, with sexual assault, there are felony arrests, there have been some deaths at some of these festivals. According to this report, every camper, every personal item, every cooler will be inspected as the cars and the campers come into the site. They've also stated that they will not back up onto the freeway or cause congestion on our roads. How is that possible if every car and every camper and every cooler and backpack is going to be inspected to keep not only the festival goers safe, but all of us who live in the community and work in the area? It just doesn't seem possible that you're gonna be able to get all of those people in and all of those people inspected, and not cause a problem for us who live there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Stuart Packard, spelled P-A-C-K-A-R-D. I am the superintendent of Buttonwillow Union School District, and as well, a member of the Kern County School Facilities Committee. It is correct that Mary Baker wrote a letter, "There is no mitigation factor for our, our school with costs, because buildings are not being built at the facility." As a, as the superintendent, I'm in a unique position, because many of the people here tonight are also the people who vote for my school board, who are also the people that keep me in my position. I have members on both sides of my school board that are on both sides of this- I have members on both sides of my school board that are on both sides of this view. So what I would like to say, though, is I am not recommending, opposing, or in favor of anything from our school board's direction at this point, because my biggest concern is the safety of students. I spoke to Mr. Rudnick the other day, and we had a very nice conversation. But I would like to say there are two concerns I have for the school. One is very minimal, if negligible, and that is, should there be overflow of people who think they should stay in the community, our playground and our school facilities then become, well, maybe we can camp out here and nobody will notice. I don't believe that's going to be a case, but it is something I need to express a concern about, because if we don't express a concern as a school district, then it won't matter later on if something is to happen, or if this is extremely positive. The second part of that, and more concern, is if you notice down there in the, where the right angle is formed at Seventh Standard and Buttonwillow Drive, that is where both of our bus routes are connected. We run one bus to the east and one bus to the route, one to the east, one to the west. At that particular location, both of our bus runs do intersect and are coming down at that point. We, our district is approximately 256 square miles, which is a very large district, so we need to send two buses out, one to the west, one to the east. When you look at what happens at that point, we have approximately 45 students on every bus in the morning between 7:30 and 8:00 a.m., and we have 65 students in the afternoon between 3:30 and 4:00 p.m. on the buses. We send buses up Buttonwillow Drive, we send buses both ways on Seventh Standard, and so it is, it is a safety concern. I know Mr. Rudnick has addressed those with me. I think I would be remiss if I did not represent the district and at least give some thought of a concern. Like I said, we are not, as a school board, in favor of this. We are not opposed to this. This is only the superintendent expressing the concerns for the students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay. Looks like we have no more speakers that are in opposition, so now we'll take testimony for those that are in support of the project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Della Hodson, H-O-D-S-O-N. I am President and CEO of United Way of Kern County. I'm here tonight to speak in support of this project. I don't claim to have the answers to our, to all of the challenges that might be raised, but I want to tell you about the conversations that we at United Way of Kern County have had with the Rudnicks about this project, and some of their plans to benefit this community well beyond, well beyond their own business interests. What they are proposing with these festivals is, to us, a very exciting cultural activity, as well as, obviously, a great business opportunity, but it also includes plans for broader benefit to this community and to the nonprofit sector that serves some of the most vulnerable in our community. As I said, obviously, there are a lot of issues to be worked out, and I know from my conversations with the applicants that they are absolutely focused on working out every single one of them, and I have confidence that they will work with their neighbors, with the county, with the state, and with whomever they need to work with to make this happen, because their focus has been on the community. They have offered an opportunity for the nonprofit sector in Kern County to benefit from these festivals. United Way has agreed to assist them in that, to accommodate the sale of tickets for the benefit of various organizations. And if you've been watching the news at all over the last couple of years, you know that all of us in the nonprofit sector are the very embodiment of doing more with less the last few years. We all need to get creative about how we raise money, where we raise money, and find innovative ways. And this project has offered an opportunity for those of us who serve, as I said, some of the most vulnerable people in our community, to find a new source of revenue. We're supportive of that, we're supportive of the organizations that have come forward to help in that regard. There was a reference earlier to the 12 additional letters of support that came in today to the package. Those were all from members of the nonprofit community in Kern County. As I said, I don't claim to have the answers to the very real and valid concerns of the neighbors, but I do have confidence in the applicant's sincere desire to develop a project that is not only a successful business and cultural undertaking, but also one that will have a much broader benefit to this entire community. And I ask you to think it through, work it out, and find a way to bring this project to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Martine Etcheverry, E-T-C-H-E-V-E-R-R-Y. My family has farmed in the Seventh Standard and Callaway Drive area for over 100 years. My brother Mark and I have farmed there ourselves for 40 years. We have seen many changes over the years as development has approached us. We have successfully adopted all of our farming practices to our, to the new circumstances, and we still have a thriving farming operation. We stand in full support of the Cal Center Festival Project, and we hope you approve the CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Rick Davis. I'm a retired county department head, whose last assignment was as Director of the Board of Trade. I have been separated from that position for almost six years, but during that time, my job and my team's job was to identify and promote tourism, economic development, and all the benefits that come from projects such as this whitewater rafting in the Kern River Valley, everything you can think of that brings money to Kern County. What I'd like to speak to, just for a few minutes, or two items, the effect of, in the cultural and community aspect, and then, secondly, a little look at the economic benefits, because this is what we did at the Board of Trade on a daily basis, was to analyze what was good financially for our community and for our local governments and nonprofits. From a cultural standpoint, festivals have always provided a great community maker. I think probably the most exciting example is the Cal State Jazz Festival, where our community comes together and they celebrate that music, that venue. Another one on the periphery that I think is positive is also the Bakersfield Business Conference, where while it was focused on business, there was a huge entertainment component, and the people from all over the world came, and that transitions to, the main topic I'd like to share with you is the economic benefit of this type of an operation. While at the Board of Trade as early as 2010, during my tenure, we looked at this. We had several, excuse me, several outside operators come into the area, and we did our due diligence in looking for land, looking for opportunities to bring a festival, because we realized the tremendous economic benefit and national and international awareness it would bring to this community. The current economic impact study that's before you in your packet, which was developed by CSUB, identifies about $125 million in economic benefit from eight concerts. If you apply, and that's extremely conservative, if you apply a larger multiplier factor to that, which is indirect effects of spending, that number would probably be closer to $200, $250 million, and this is just at the beginning. You begin to think about what one person spends as a participant in the festival. They buy food, they buy beverage, they're not camping, they're using our hotels, and while a lot of people don't realize about the hotels, has anyone recently tried to find a room on the coast when the Mid-State Fair is going? I tried three weeks ago to attend my grandson's birthday party in Lompoc, and Lompoc, which is a long ways from Paso Robles, was sold out. So this will have a wonderful positive effect on our community, far, far away from just that site. It will provide thousands of jobs, granted on a temporary basis, but if you add that to the 15,000 jobs that currently are held by people that support tourism and travel, this is a wonderful addition to the community, and it's an opportunity to grow our financial and economic positive impacts for our community, as well as our notoriety. Nobody knew where India was, you know, years ago, and now everybody knows where the Coachella Festival is, or the Mid-State Fair. There are so many positive things, and with the timer already and negative time, I'm going to wrap it up, but I would be happy to discuss and answer questions to anything that leans to this whole economic aspect of a project, and I would really encourage your commission to consider a approval for this project as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Susan Watkins, W-A-T-K-I-N-S, and I'm a Buttonwillow resident and have been for most of the past 40 years. I also work in Buttonwillow and voluntarily serve, or have served, on a variety of boards in Buttonwillow, and am very active in church, senior group activities, and many local annual events. And my job, I just work there in town, it allows me the opportunity to get to know the residents of our wonderful little community personally, and provide services to them through a variety of programs. So since I work in the, in public service, I don't have any private business biases or concerns or personal gains from this project. I'm just a resident of Buttonwillow. So just August 1st, did I hear about Phil and Daniel Rudnick's proposed Cal Center Music and Arts Venue with the location already noted, just outside our community? And I was very excited about the prospect of having this site just down the road from us, bringing Kern County a much-needed boost from the recent decline in oil revenues and employment. I like the idea of expanding any opportunities for art and culture in our county, and now having seen the beautiful proposal plans, I eagerly anticipate that this would be developed in our backyard. Not another truck stop or cheap motel, potentially world-famous music and art center. So in speaking to my circle of Buttonwillow friends and neighbors, since learning about this only the 1st of August this year, almost all knew nothing about this project, but most wanted to know more and were supportive of this venture. The Rudnicks, respected businessmen with a history of commitment to our Kern County community, are to be commended, in my opinion, for this proposal and opportunity to bring a breath of fresh air in the form of music and art for all of us to enjoy in years to come. I sincerely hope you will give thoughtful consideration to this project and give it a chance to prove itself successful and welcome in Buttonwillow and Kern County.
Thank you. Next speaker. Anyone else? Okay, I guess we have one more.
My name is Anthony Buoni, B-U-O-N-I, and I am in full support of the Cal Center Festival Project. I am a certified private applicator through the Department of Pesticide Regulations, and my family and I farm cotton, corn, alfalfa, and almonds all over Kern County. Our 2,000-acre operation is headquartered in Old River, which is in the further southwest of town. However, we do farm a few hundred acres in Buttonwillow. Aside from my family's business, I have previously managed a private custom spray company that specialized in pistachios and almonds. For my family's business, I coordinate and personally apply every chemical application that takes place on our farm. Many of those applications involve restricted materials that require a notice of intent and proper notification and coordination with surrounding residential dwellings and commercial businesses. For instance, one ranch in particular is Cattercorner from Lakeside Union School District, which I sprayed this morning. For this morning's application, I had to submit a notice of intent to spray the restricted material that I would be applying, as well as communicate with Lakeside to ensure that no children would be present. They allotted a three-day window for me to spray, and I was able to sufficiently get the job done. During the 10 months that school is ongoing, nine months for regular school session, one month for summer school, I can only apply restricted materials in the quarter-mile buffer zone while school is not in session or on weekends. With these limitations, my family and I have been successfully able to grow and produce quality yields year after year. For these reasons, I believe that the pesticide application complaints have been over-exaggerated, and the festivals will not be a hindrance to any farm operations. If you have any questions about pesticide use in the area, please feel free to ask, and I'll answer to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Martine Etcheverry Jr., E-T-C-H-E-V-E-R-R-Y. I'm here tonight in full support of this project, not only because of the economic impact it will have for Bakersfield, but also the positive impact it will have on Bakersfield's reputation. People from all over the state will actually want to come to Bakersfield for an event like this. I believe not approving this project would be a tremendous letdown for the people in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Seeing none, the applicant have a closing comment?
Thank you very much, Chairman Babcock. A couple of things I would like to-
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, Daniel Rudnick, R-U-D-N-I-C-K, for the applicant. Couple of things I wanted to mention that were incorrect. Clean Harbors, we've been in constant communication with Clean Harbors for some weeks now, and they have a alternate route, and they've always had an alternate route through Highway 33 and Locurn Road. They typically don't operate or receive any shipments of any materials on that site on Saturday or Sunday, so when we, when the issue was first raised and we discussed it, they said, well, two-thirds of your problem is gone, because we don't operate on Saturday or Sunday, and that all the drivers that come out here all know and all use on a consistent basis the alternate route. So I just don't think that, and they said there's no problem, they see absolutely no problem, working around our festival schedule, eight a year, whatever it happens to be, because really, they're just, if anything, they're going to be, it would be like a Friday or a Monday morning would be the only time that they would have to direct, specifically direct traffic, or their traffic coming to their site on their alternate route, which they use anyhow. So I think, I think Mr. Don Pall spoke about that there was none, I just wanted to correct the record, and I think staff already has the CUP for Clean Harbors and knows that there is an alternate route that they use. Also, Mr. Gilroducci mentioned a lot of different things that were going on right now, but the months of operation that we proposed were March through July, and then October, November. The staff recommendation, which we accept, has come back and said, well, we think it would be better if you would operate March through May and October, November, so June, July, and August, when 90% of Mr. Gilroducci's discussions and all the other discussions about harvesting, about all the things, were all happening during months when we are not going to be there and we're not in operation. So there's a significant amount of mistaken or misguided information in terms of what the restrictions are. The restrictions, and I'd like to direct your attention to the staff report on page 13, it's the second paragraph, and the second part of that paragraph points out that- 13, it's the second paragraph, and the second part of that paragraph points out that the project that we're already approved for, that we were zoned for in 1988, that we were approved for in terms of building a large travel plaza, truck stop, motels, and things of that nature, which is there, would create a permanent buffer zone around the entire area. We're talking about an intermittent buffer zone, and that buffer zone, as far as the Ag Commissioner is concerned, is a quarter mile. And it's not that all spraying is prohibited, it's that spraying of restricted materials is prohibited to be applied by helicopter or aircraft. You can apply it any other way, but not by helicopter or aircraft. I looked at that, and when I was workshopping my project with all my neighbors, and they said, "Well, that's fine, but, you know, we're still concerned about drift and things of that nature." I talked to farmers that farm strawberries and the Ventura Plains that have multiple schools involved that use the hottest chemicals and pesticides and fumigants that there are to find out, how did they handle the situation with the schools and sensitive receptors in their area? Talked to other farmers in this valley, other pest control advisors, and they said, basically, they said, "Daniel, this is real easy. In terms of making applications, all you have to do, if we know months in advance, which we would, that you're going to have a festival, we're going to be in the fields checking, and we're going to make a decision a few days, three or four days, five days, whatever it is, prior to the festival, whether we need to spray. If we're going to spray, then we'll spray. Or we're going to make a decision that we're going to spray after the festival." But that, three or four days where we would be precluded from applying restricted materials by aircraft, is not a challenge. In the PCA's that I spoke with, not only service our ranch, but many others in the Metler area, and could I have the PowerPoint? And I don't know how to change the slides, but I wanted to point out a couple of- Is Mr. Daniel, is there a control here?
Do you want to start the next slide?
All the way to the bottom?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Mr. Rudnick a question while we're waiting?
Sure.
Rudnick, you say it's not a problem to identify and spray five days before the festival, but the truth of matter is, there's a two-week or even longer setup period, depending on how fast they can get it done. And then after the event, there is additional time of one week or two weeks to get the material back out of there. So your comment is not correct. Five days before the festival, we would spray or not spray, or whatever. You've got people in there two or three weeks before, and a couple of weeks after, you still can't spray because there's human beings there on the property. I'm concerned about human lives here.
And so am I. Like I said before, safety is my number-one thing, Commissioner Sprague, but they're not precluded from spraying. They're precluded from spraying with aircraft. They can spray with ground rigs, that's the way that they normally spray anyhow.
But you still have to consider the drift of the spray, even with the ground rig?
That's true, and as, every farmer knows, every farmer sitting in this audience knows that they have a restricted materials permit that's issued by the Ag Commissioner, just like I do. And it's got multiple things in there, and one of the main things is, don't spray anything other than your crop. Now, yeah, okay, yeah, that's not it right there.
Also, I have a question while you're looking. What's, the best interest of the farmers, isn't aerial spraying the most economic way versus ground spraying? Aren't you putting a burden on them by forcing them to go to ground, so you could have your project continue?
No, not really. There's going to be times, June through the end of September, when they can spray using anything, and the rest of the time, they can spray using aircraft or ground rigs. Yeah, could we just stay right on there for a second? So when I was meeting with everybody, they wanted to know, you know, what we could do to alleviate that. And when I met with the Ag Commissioner, both the previous Ag Commissioner, Ruben Arroyo, and met with Mr. Fankhauser, they suggested that I have a larger buffer area and discuss it with my neighbors, and I did that. And I did reach an agreement with Tim Thompson, who's on the east side of Interstate 5, and when I first started this, I thought, you know, he grows organic vegetables, he's got people in the field all the time, that was going to be the biggest challenge for anybody to work around that kind of an operation. But it wasn't. It was actually, he sat down with me, we discussed it, we worked it out, he told me what his concerns were, how he had to work things, and he's organic, there's no buffer zone for him, so if Mr. Paula happens to be spraying his cotton or his hay, and he sprays Mr. Thompson's organic vegetables or drifts spray over there, then he's got a problem. There is no buffer zone there, there's a zero tolerance on organic crops for other kinds of materials other than approved for organic.
Understood.
So, yeah, so if I can work with the most challenging operation in Buttonwillow, right across the road from me, with organic vegetables that are field-packed in the field, I don't know any stronger evidence that everybody around me, that we could cooperate and work together. And my door has always been open. When I-
We're talking about human lives here.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're not talking about crops.
Absolutely, yeah. So we're talking about human lives, I don't want to do anything to endanger any human lives, and neither do any of the farmers, and that's the way they apply pesticides and other restricted materials, so people don't get harmed. Occasionally, it happens.
Do you have any more comments?
Yes, I do.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay. Could I have that? It shows the festival location. Can we zoom in on that, Mr. Nino, at all? Okay, well, what I wanted to point out with this particular slide is, just three miles to the south of our property is the town of Buttonwillow. Is the town of Buttonwillow. It's, what, 1,500, 2,000 residents live there, it's surrounded by farm ground, and all those farming operations are thriving. They have buffer zones, they have 1,500 to 2,000, 1,500 to 2,000 sensitive receptors, people, lives, right there in the middle of Buttonwillow, in the middle of all the farming operations, and everybody has been able to successfully farm and not endanger the lives of the people in Buttonwillow. That same logic follows that if they use the same care, and the same skill, and the same cooperation, and follow the same rules that they do with the town of Buttonwillow, they can certainly avoid spraying people that happen to be attendees at a festival on our land. And in fact, as the staff report makes note, that there would be, if we develop the commercial projects that are zoned and permitted there, there would be a permanent buffer zone around there, 24/7, 365, that they would have to be concerned because people would be there all the time. And in talking to, you know, lots of different farmers that farm around the Famosa Raceway, where we have major, large gatherings of people and events during the year, they have found that it's just absolutely no problem to work around the schedule of those type of things. And I understand the concerns, and I've tried to meet with everybody, but honestly, the only farmer, my neighbors, that continued to stay engaged and talk through and work through and think through how we could do this was Mr. Thompson. And everybody else withdrew, and there was no opportunity to continue the conversation. So my door's always open, and I've always wanted to build more safety into my festival site by expanding, voluntarily expanding the buffer zone to a half a mile, but it's kind of fallen, my request has fallen on deaf ears, so.
Mr. Rudnick, I have a question. Mr. Chairman, I think in previous testimony, I heard that Mr. Thompson was compensated by Cal Center for that agreement, is that correct?
He will be compensated if we have festivals there, yes. He gets compensated per festival.
Okay.
Yeah, and that same agreement is available for all the other farmers, all my other neighbors. Not only does, and a copy of that agreement is in the staff report, not only do they get compensated, but I independently provide insurance and a commercial umbrella policy to protect them from any claims, because people said, "Well, what if we do everything right, but we still, we have a claim?"
So you hung a carrot in order to get the agreement?
I had, Mr. Sprague, I made a business deal with one of the finest farmers in the Buttonwillow area.
Don't doubt that.
And there was consideration. I asked him, "Tim, would you not spray during the festival?" And he said, "Yes, he would, as long as I took care of these concerns, and we worked through it, and we reached an agreement." I don't know what else a gentleman does with a neighbor, other than sit down and talk and figure it out. That's what I tried to do, that's what I did with him, and that's what I would like to do with everybody else, but they're not interested.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you have somebody just trying to get your attention.
I've only got one correction. That parcel that he pointed out, when he made a deal with Tim-
Sir, just give me a minute here, okay? You need to come to the podium, so would you have a seat, and I'll allow you to come up in a minute.
No, I'll yield to my good friend Fred, if that's all right with the chairman.
Okay, I have closed the public portion, but if you have a quick comment-
Well, I just wanted to make a correction on that.
Would you state your name for the record?
Red Star, S-T-A-R-R-H. And I wanted to make a correction on that one map, that he was pointing out that he made a deal with Tim Thompson. We bought that parcel, we own that parcel, and we didn't make any deal. That's all I wanted to point out.
Thank you, sir.
The parcel that was just south of-
Thank you, sir.
Seven Standard, that he was discussing, we own, so.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm Phil Rudnick, father of Daniel, and I just have a couple of things. First, I would like to ask a question of Mr. Starr, if I may, it's not a-
Through the chair, through the chair.
Through the chair. Actually, Fred, how old are you, through the chair?
Too old.
Mr. Rudnick, what does-
The purpose is that Fred said he's the oldest one here, and I don't know if he is. If he's older than 85, he's the oldest.
Okay.
Are you older than 85?
Gentlemen, gentlemen, this has nothing to do, this has nothing to do with what we're discussing, okay?
All right. First of all, I want to say this about all of our neighbors. They are all responsible, they're all good farmers, and they're all long-term supporters of this community. They have some concerns, and that's what all this hearing, that's what the plan, that's what all the conditions are, to meet and try to deal with that. But one of the things that I think we've lost sight of, not the fact that spraying is not an issue, it is. It is. But really, to what extent is that an issue? You've got two, without looking at the map, you've got two quarter-mile buffers, a mile long. That's 1,320 feet, that's about 320 acres. So the only land that is adversely affected, to the extent that it might be, is 320 acres, because the rest of it has no limitation. So I think we have to put it in perspective, because when you have a situation where you have good reason on one side and good reason on the other, you're going to have to, just like anyone else, balance the equities. And all I'm saying is, is that I think that this county, based on the economics analysis from Cal State's university economics people, of over $100 million a year for this community, is a fair balance to what might happen and will be limited to 320 acres. Now, having said that, that's the economic. The other problems that they raise are legitimate problems, the traffic, such as that. We have gone through many, many hours, working out the proper traffic, which means that during any of this time, any of the events, or any of the preparation for the events, there's going to be a person in charge, and all that any neighbor has to do is call and say, "We want to bring a combine through there at a certain time, and we will have people there that can bring them through." So if you look at all the conditions of approval, we've met all those. And the last thing I want to say is this, is that I think it's about time that Kern County started getting the benefit of what looks like a very long-term economic benefit that all other counties that have these events are experiencing. We know that the oil deal is going to be down for a long time. The farming thing, we talk about prime soils, what about the water? There's prime soils that are going to have to be fallowed because there's not enough water to farm them. Let's get up to speed. This is a wonderful project for this county. We feel that we can manage this successfully. We don't intend and don't think that this is a risk to human life. There is plenty of protections there, and to the extent that our neighbors fear these problems, it's kind of like the old saying, that, you know, it's kind of the parade of the horribles. All these things might happen, but when you control them and live through them, you find out that they're concerns, but they're not realistic.
Thank you.
If I have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them. Not, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rudnick. Okay, I'm closing the public portion of this meeting and turn it over to the Commissioners for comment and action.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question for Mr. Denny.
Right ahead.
That's right, Mr. Denny through the chair. It is true, when the applicant mentioned, that as this piece of property stands right now, the applicant could construct a hotel or a restaurant without any more land use approval, correct?
The applicant obtained approval of a precise development plan for implementation of the Cal Center plan. I believe that was last year. PD plan's good for two years, so long as he satisfies the conditions, obtains a building permit, they could commence construction of that approved plan.
So they could build a hotel or a restaurant there now, right?
The plan itself, I believe, is a phased plan, starting with a convenience store. It then works into restaurants and hotels, subject to being able to address onsite water and sewage disposal. It's a phased development. The specific uses, I believe, start with a convenience store and some food service, and then work into the restaurants and the hotels.
Thank you. And Ron and Chris, the reason why, I guess, I asked that was because in my mind, well, let me begin by saying that I think this is really a wonderful project, and I'm having some real challenges- I'm having some real challenges with the location. And in my mind, it really isn't a question about whether or not people can be at that location in a commercial sense, because we know right now they could do a hotel or a restaurant. In my mind, it's a question, when I do the balancing process, of whether or not having 65,000 people there at one time is the issue. And I guess that's the challenge I'm having with this project, is having 65,000 people there four times a year, and 45,000 people there four times a year, going to have the public health and safety issues with the, with the traffic, and the vandalism that could occur with people leaving the site, going into the orchards. That's, that's the challenges I'm having, notwithstanding the wonderful economic benefits. I support this project, you know, with its economic benefits and whatnot, it's just the location, I think, is challenging. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
Something that hasn't been brought up, when I've thought about, how is the parking monitored? When that parking lot's full and you've still got cars coming in, where are they going to go? Are you going to have overflow parking? Are you going to put signs up, parking is closed? People that have driven for a long time? It was not addressed at all, and then I see people making U-turns, or looking for a place to park along the roadway. I can see all kinds of problems when that, should that occur.
My name's Jimmy Engelman, E-N-G-E-L-M-A-N. I'm the president of On Track Event Management. I think I answered that question, Mr. Chairman. The parking is all predetermined prior to the event. Parking passes are pre-sold to specific lots, depending on your location. When parking is sold out, it is communicated through the platform, wherever one buys the tickets, is at that point that they have to take a transportation option that is also offered, so that no point is our general parking to the site. So you are not allowed onto the site without a specific parking pass. That gives you specific instructions how to get to your specific lot. On top of that, there was a comment made about checking of the bags and the coolers when they come on property. That doesn't happen during the parking process, thus alleviating the traffic concerns of the highways and the surface roads. Those items are not checked until the individual goes into either the camping area, which is a day before the main festival site opens, which is Thursday. And that's a lower volume of people on a set reservation basis as well. And so that volume is not going to be as big as the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday volume. And on top of that, when they do enter the festival site, that is where they're screened for the security. We do have security roaming all the parking lots, including the perimeter roads. So if we do have a concern about the people entering the orchards, or going into the other properties for vandalism, we are, as an event management company, putting up an additional layer of security fence on the opposite adjacent side of the roads, to protect all the neighbors, including the perimeter fence that is installed on the property itself, to make sure that people come in with a proper ticket. So there's a double layer of security fencing to help alleviate anyone going into the orchards, along with monitored security that's there 24/7 during the events.
Saying, thank you.
Sure.
I have a, I have a quick procedural question for Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall, Commissioner Poole's here with us tonight, but she's abstaining. Does that mean she's not present for the vote, and so we have to have a unanimous? Even though she, she's present here, but she's abstaining, so...
It's only going to be three people voting, and you would need a unanimous decision tonight.
Okay.
Okay, my turn.
Go ahead.
All right. Well, I have the same concerns as Commissioner Louie has, except I have more. I'm, I'm really concerned, I know Buttonwillow, I know the farming area around it. I know the farmers out there, and I know what they go through day in, day night, and a lot of time, most of the nights. Trying to cultivate and farm properties in the adjacent area around Buttonwillow, with an event like this with 45,000 to 65,000 people, or 85,000 people, whatever it may be, is, that's a disaster waiting to happen. Farmers operate 24 hours a day. They've got equipment out, they've got lights, they've got safety equipment, they've got all that stuff on their machineries. But we're talking about human lives here, too. Disruption of farming and cultural operations in the whole area, including the town of Buttonwillow. And I'm concerned about the town of Buttonwillow, from that standpoint, with that many people within a three-mile radius of this particular event that could happen eight times a year. And at this point, we don't know what those times are, what those months are, because there hasn't been, it hasn't been completely laid out. So how does a farmer plan to farm his crops, which he has an inherent right to do and has done for hundreds of years, without knowing what's going to interrupt him in a music event at any particular time, that the event organizer wants to have that event within the dedicated months? And that's a nightmare for a farmer. I think that the event's a great, a great development. But I think it's in a wrong location, and to bring it in and stick it into the center of a prime farming, cultural community, and just drop it on them, and say, "Okay, we're going to do this, we'll take money out of this thing, and we're going to disrupt your farming activities that you've done for years and years." I don't think that's right, and I don't think that's the American way. I'm having a real tough time supporting this particular project application, based on what I've read in the staff report, as well as the I R. And I have, as I said, the same concerns as Commissioner Louie, and I haven't heard from Commissioner Babcock yet. But, you know, my major problem here is the traffic congestion that's going to happen with these events, eight times a year, having a perpetual conditional use permit that lasts forever, and doesn't have a cap on it. I mean, to me, that's just not good planning, because times change, things change. Cultural farming on permanent crops doesn't change, unless they don't have the water to farm it, or they have to change out crops due to the age of the trees, or the vines, or whatever they have. Traffic congestion is a major, major issue with me. Pulling those cars into those areas, and the parking areas, and taking those people and those cars out of there, along with the bus congestion, and putting them on I-5, going both ways, and challenging the connections to the highways, where many, many lives have been lost in that particular corridor, in that particular area of turning on and off the highway, is a major, major event. You put, let's say you put 30,000 cars on the highway, going either way, and you got all the truck traffic, and you got all the car traffic, and people going back and forth, especially on weekends, getting back and forth to San Francisco, Sacramento, LA. That's a major event. I've witnessed it, the farmers that farm there witness it, and the community witnesses it. I just think it's the wrong place for it, and I'm, I just can't support the project. So I just wanted to say that, and listen to Mr. Babcock, if he has questions on it, listen to the rest of the commissioners, and then make my final decision where it's at. But right now, I'm leaning on the other side of the fence. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. I, too, have a problem with the number of people, and this being conditioned for as long as the property is there, under that CUP. There's no, let's give it a year and see how it works, and maybe cut the size of the amount of people down, and see how well they manage it, and then they could come back a year later, and we could be talking to the neighbors. I mean, that's an option I could see, but that's the only option. We'd have to greatly reduce the number of people, condition it for a year, and see how well they manage their endeavor. I don't know what the applicant would think of that, but I can't support that many people in one spot. And like you said, the farming industry has been there a lot longer than your project is, or your proposed project will be, and I've got to support the farmers.
Commissioner, Chairman Babcock, I think your idea of a limited CUP may be a good one, but I think in a one-year period, it's a real problem for the event developer and organizer, because it takes time to put these music festivals together.
Well, maybe two years would be reasonable.
Two or three years, two or three years could be workable, and then, within a two- or three-year period, we would know what type of problems with traffic and spraying, and everything else that's being put into that particular area. But overall, looking at the reality of the situation, it's the wrong place for an event like this to take place.
You know, I...
I'd rather see it out towards Highway 46, off the highway, or somewhere like that.
Given there's only three of us, we...
Chairman, Commissioner Sprague, I would note that Mr. Tracy indicated, and Mr. Tracy, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, that you indicated you would be okay with one event per year?
We suggest one event. We oppose the whole issue, but if you decide to go forward...
You want to limit the eight?
One event.
Not economically feasible, I don't think.
I mean, at least, you know, I really, I mean, the economic benefit to our county would be wonderful, having something like this, but I...
Not at one event, I would disagree with you.
Well, I, maybe not one event, but, you know, this project, in conception, in its, you know, in abstract, would be a great economic benefit to our county, but I just, I think it's a bad location, because of all the things that we talked about.
I agree, it's a great, great project, it's just location, you know?
Mr. Chairman, I read in the, I think it was the E I R, the staff report, that there was an item in there that stated that there was an alternative, no project, that we should consider or could consider. And maybe we should look at it as that direction, if we're going to take a vote on this. I would refer back to Mr. Hall to review that. Mr. Hall?
Yes, E I R's have a no-project alternative, but I'm not sure I'm following what your thought process is.
Well, I guess, then, the alternative to that would be to vote yes or no on the project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to clarify a point.
Could the, I mean, is the, do we know if the applicant could scale this back? Is that something that they would consider doing? I know they scaled it, I know they scaled it back from 85,000, I don't know if they wanted to do that.
It's, it would really have to be scaled back for me.
I mean, they took it from 85,000 down to 65 and 45, I don't know.
The real point is the wrong location for the event. That's what we're worried about, too, with the traffic situation that's there. That's what's hanging it up for me.
It's far... Somebody going to make a motion here?
I would make a motion to decline the project, as it's presently set forth.
To deny?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to deny the project. Cast your votes.
Three ayes, one absent, one abstained.
Thank you.
Sorry, three noes.
Three noes.
Yes, correct.
To deny, though, it was to deny. Yes, okay. Okay, project's been denied.
Mr. Chairman, this is a...
Yes, we need to...
...CUP, so there is an appeal process that you benefit?
Yes, please read it.
For projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms available at the Planning and Natural Resources Department.
Thank you. This brings us to item two. This is Amendment of Zoning Map Number 165, Zone Change Case Number 71. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant present for this item? Okay, would you please come down to the front? Mr. Denny, are you handling this one as well?
Yes, Commissioner Babcock, I will.
All righty. You can have it seeked right now.
Our second item tonight is a, as you indicated, Amendment of Zoning Map Number 165, Zone Change Case Number 71. Our applicant is known as 801 Balboa LLC. This involves a, approximately a 57-acre project site, where we're seeking to change in zone classification from E5, that's an estate five acres, to A, the Exclusive Agriculture or a more restrictive district. Our site, again, is a 57-acre parcel located a quarter-mile south of State Route 202, on the west side of Banducci Road in the Tehachapi area. The site is presently zoned E5, and it contains a multitude of map code designations. As indicated on page one of the staff report, the site contains at least five map code designations, primarily 5.7, which is a residential minimum five-acre gross map code. It also contains a number of other map code designations, which reflect physical constraints, such as liquefaction risks and flood hazard risks. And as we stated here, the site is undeveloped and historically been used for agriculture and grazing. State Route 202 lies to the north, properties to the south are developed with single-family residences, while properties to the east and west are irrigated agricultural land and also contain single-family residences. Access to this site is provided by Banducci Road, which is a arterial alignment, that's 110-foot wide right-of-way at ultimate buildout, as identified in the circulation element of the Greater Tehachapi Area Specific and Community Plan. In September of 2005, the Board of Supervisors considered a general plan amendment and change in zone classification, in order for that applicant at that time, Bright Meadows, Inc., to subdivide the property into 10 parcels of approximately five acres each. There was no map proposed. Essentially, the applicant at that time, Bright Meadows, Inc., needed a change in map code designation from a 20-acre minimum lot size to the five-acre minimum lot size, and then a change in zone classification from A to E5 in order to implement that map code. So essentially, they were laying the groundwork to subdivide the 57-acre site into a multitude of five-acre parcels. There was a number of, at that September hearing, there was testimony taken in opposition and in support, and upon taking that testimony, by a vote of five to zero in favor, the Board of Supervisors adopted the resolutions and enacted the ordinance approving the present map codes and the present zoning of E5. The applicant now is wanting to unwind that. The current applicant is seeking a zone change from E5 to A, in order to facilitate the establishment of a small organic farm, employing the rotational grazing of sheep and cattle on that site. They also plan to construct an office and a resident for an onsite foreman, and possibly a seasonal farm stand, as well as a livestock barn. The applicant owns and operates J&amp;J Grass-fed Beef, which is an organic 100% grass-fed cattle operation, selling direct to consumers in Kern County throughout Southern California. This farm, as proposed in the applications received by the planning department, indicate that, well, the farm will feature certified organic irrigated pastures with cattle, sheep, and chickens, all raised using ethical and low-stress handling methods. Water supply and sewage disposal would be by individual water well and a private septic system. For the purposes of clarification, when we talk about a farm stand and store, we're talking about a temporary fruit stand. The A-zone does allow temporary fruit stands as an allowed use, so long as they're limited to selling agricultural and horticultural or farming projects that are also allowed in the A District. in the A-district. So they don't necessarily have to be grown there, but they have to be allowed in the A-zone district. But, the request before your commission tonight is simply the change in zone classification. Should your commission make a recommendation and the board subsequently approve, any development that occurs on that site would have to occur in accordance with the county's zoning and building code ordinances. The proposed zone district, like I said, is one that previously existed on the site, and it's intended to designate areas suitable for agricultural uses and to prevent the encroachment of incompatible uses onto agricultural lands and the premature conversion of such lands to non-agricultural uses. If Mr. Nino would put up the zone map, I think you'll be able to see why the original request sought an E-five zoning, because of the estate zoning to the south and what you would see along what would be the Highline Road extension. You have a number of properties that are zoned E-two-and-a-half, E-twenty, you see some E-one to the east, but all the lands to the north and to the west of the project site are all zoned A. So at the time in two thousand and six, it was probably believed that this land would undergo a similar transition as to what was being seen to the east and to the south. That did not occur for some unknown reason. With regard to the change in zone classification, a number of times your board has advised that we also need to look at an inclusion within the boundaries of an ag preserve. The board's policy is that all land zoned A be included in the boundaries of an ag preserve. That is generally done so that lands can be put into Williamson Act contracts. However, to be eligible for Williamson Act contract, you also have to be resource designated. The applicant is not requesting a change in map code, they still will have a residential map code on there that allows the five acre parcels, they're just simply downzoning to the least intensive zone district that's consistent with that. As such, this land would not qualify to be placed under a Williamson Act contract, as it's not going to be resource designated. Without the resource designation, staff doesn't believe it's prudent at this time to include it within the boundaries of an ag preserve. If the applicant wants to put it into a contract at a later date, they can change the general plan and do an inclusion at that point in time. Page three, the staff report indicates the comment letters that were received from the Public Works Department and the Caltrans Department for the state of California. Caltrans reiterated that the proper means of access to the site would be via Banducci Road, and they also wanted to ensure that any future grading that occurred would ensure that no stormwater greater than historic enters the two oh-two right-of-way to the north. The Division of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources indicated that there were no known wells on the site, but however, as generally stated, should one be found, they should be notified accordingly. Our application that was submitted, we did get ten property owners signing a petition letter prepared by the applicant's support, and that's been included. However, with regard to the noticing, we did get a letter from two property owners, David Mears and a Mike Brock, who submitted identical letters with concerns that were identified on page four. Essentially, the concerns they had dealt with the farming activity practices themselves in regards to the residential properties. They also expressed concerns about the use of the dirt road in the area, and I believe what they're referring to is Highline Road. I believe that road, while it's shown on the map as transitioning into Banducci Road, actually does continue along the southern border of the project site. That road, Highline Road, is actually intended to serve the parcel map to the south, and it is a private road, is for the use of the residents within that tract, it is not a public access easement. So again, the correct means of access to the site is from Banducci Road and Banducci Road only. Again, the concerns expressed were the farming activities, they were concerned about hours of operation, the use of fertilizers and pesticides, the number of animals that might be on the property, would the owners be present? In response to that, staff provided the answers on page five, and of course, as your commission is aware, anytime somebody writes a letter with regard to a project, their letter is included in the staff report, and we also send them a copy of the staff report to inform them of the response that's been provided to them. This keeps them involved, since they took the time to participate in the project, we want to keep them fully informed as to the status of the project and any responses that can be provided. On page five of the staff report, we tried to answer their questions, explaining what had been provided to the department as far as an organic farming operation, that the fact while an owner might not be living on it, there would be a ranch hand or foreman that would be living there, that the road that would be utilized would be Banducci Road, and we did confirm that Highline Road is a private road for the establishment, or established for the use of the track to the south. I think there's even a notice in here that they may want to coordinate with the county about a possible option of gating Highline Road at a certain spot if they were wanting to ensure it was utilized just by the traveling public for that tract. With regard to the numbers of animals on that site, the A-zone allows for a wide variety of hoofed animals, cattle, goat, sheep, and as a result, it would be difficult to say the numbers and types of animals that would be on that site if you're trying to compare cattle with sheep as an example. With regard to SEQA, staff believes utilization of Section one-five-one-eight-three of the Public Resources Code is appropriate. There was an environmental impact report prepared for the Greater Tehachapi Plan. The zoning that we're applying to the site, as requested by the applicant, is the least intensive zoning there is in the zoning ordinance. It is also compatible, or consistent, I should say, with the map code designation, and as a result, is staff's conclusion that the environmental impact report is adequate, and therefore, there is no need to prepare any further environmental documents. So as a result, we're utilizing Section one-five-one-eight-three to satisfy the requirements of SEQA. In the conclusion on page six, staff identifies some goals and policies within the plan, three specifically, and staff believes that implementation of the A-district is consistent with these goals and policies, and reminds your commission that while the present zoning is consistent with the map code designation, this change in zone classification, if implemented, would similarly continue to maintain consistency as required by the government code. As such, it's staff's recommendation that the request sufficiently demonstrates compliance with the necessary findings, and therefore advises your commission to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to approve the zone change as requested and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. Now, there was an addendum that was also handed out to your commission. This addendum had a letter from an Anita Alvarez. I believe the comments that I spoke with regard to the two gentlemen, Mr. Brock and Mr. Mears, are similar concerns as to what were expressed by Ms. Alvarez, but again, I do want to point that out, that she did have a letter that was submitted to the department that we received very late after preparation of the report, but we're able to hand out to you tonight. With that, that completes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Other than the applicant, does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this application? Okay. All right, would the applicant come forward, please? Please state your name for the record and spell your last name?
Yes, sir, it's Jay Shipman, S-H-I-P-M-A-N.
Do you agree, have you read, and do you agree with the conditions on your project?
Yes, I have.
Do you have any comments at this point?
Just that, you know, I'm representing Eight-O-One Balboa. I own J&amp;J Grass-fed Beef, which is the operator of the property. We've owned J&amp;J Grass-fed Beef now for over ten years. We operate an organic-certified grass-fed and grass-finished beef operation in several locations in California. This is our home community, we live in Tehachapi, my wife and girls are here. The proposed site has a home and office that you, staff, mentioned, so this is something that we're developing for our future in our community, obviously. The Tehachapi Plan, one of the major points, is sustainable agriculture and tourism. We have several thousand customers in Southern California, and I get requests on weekly basis to come and see our operation and see what we're doing. It's an open-door policy for people who are buying their food from us to come and see what we're doing. So we're open to anything and all questions, and mitigating anything that surrounding property owners have, you know, have brought up. I've also met with the surrounding property owners, including the property owners who are here to voice their valid concerns, you know, over ag areas and ag operations, you know, in the vicinity, to try to alleviate those concerns. So, those are my only comments, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the operation, regarding use of the property, plans for the future, both before and after the comments, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please come up.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm David Mears, M-E-A-R-S. I live directly across the street from the property. At first, I had, I voiced my oppositions to things based on the farming operation that is directly to the west of that property. They run row crops twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Their people run up and down our roads with farm equipment, with farm workers, they, we have a really bad road, they go really fast. So, all the neighbors that actually live adjacent to that parcel of property have been up in arms for some time about the way things are done. We subsequently met with Mr. Shipman, went over what he wants to do. I have no problem with Mr. Shipman, I have no problem with what he wants to do. The problem is, A-zoning leaves it open to, if you change it to A-zoning and allow him to do what he wants to do, that's great, until it doesn't work, or until his plans change, or until he sells it to somebody else, or the farmer next door for more money. Then, what happens? Then are they gonna put full-on farming operation right across the street from our house, destroy our property values, draw even more water out of the... The water well for our community, where we all live, is in my front yard. We're already having problems with water. The people at the, at the far end of our, of our community have hardly any water pressure. At times, when, when the water table is low, they just don't. So, I, I just have problems with that. What about in the future? If, if they don't continue doing their custom farming operation with the cattle, then it's open for anybody else to do anything else. You know, in the last project you talked about, can you limit what they do? Can you make it revert back? And that's what I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about that.
Unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball.
Yeah, I know. But you won't put any limitations on it either. And, that's my concern.
Okay. Next speaker?
Hi, I'm Mike Brock, B-R-O-C-K is my last name. I'm gonna make this as brief as possible, I'm gonna say a lot of what David just said, but our major concerns is what might happen if this, you know, they change their mind, it fails, they, whatever, they leave the area. We're leaving ourselves open to something that could be pretty bad for our property value, our way of life, the ability to enjoy our outdoor areas because of the, the additional fertilizer or the traffic, the farm workers, their vehicles parked out there. Not so much aerial spraying, but spraying of crops if they decide to do crops. And, and you know, in Tehachapi, the wind blows pretty much all the time. So, that's our main concern. I did speak a little bit with Mr. Shipman and his wife, they were gracious enough to come out and talk to us. Their plans sound tremendous. We like the idea of that place being cleaned up and grazing farmland, and it will make it look nicer. But if that doesn't happen, or if that changes in the future, we have left ourselves open to an absolute nightmare. And, I, I don't know a lot about the Planning Commission, but I don't know if you guys can somehow say that, okay, we will agree to allow Mr. Shipman this change of zoning for this specific purpose. If he chooses to sell or not to go through with his project, it converts back without any further interference from the Planning Commission. It's already in the Planning Commission. It says right there, that if you don't, if you don't do this for your agricultural, or your, your, you know what I'm saying? It just, that's our concern. And he mentioned that he had like ten letters of approval. On, on those lots right there, the first lot off of Banducci, the larger one, I'm two lots over from that one, so there's one, two, three, no, up higher. Yeah, no, 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 right there, that's one, now go to the east, I mean, I'm sorry, go to the west. Two, three, that's me right there. So there's three, four, five, six, seven, there's seven or eight lots right there that actually bordered that piece of property. He had ten letters. Out of those ten letters, I think there might be one person that borders that property. The rest of them are on the other side, or further on the next road over. I, I don't know why those people were even considered. I never got a letter to sign, I have not seen...
Could you...
This, his proposal, you asked him if he agreed with all his conditions?
Yes.
I haven't seen those. I don't have anything, I, the only thing I want to know is, I want to know more about this before...
Well, if you, give me a minute here, I want to talk to staff. The question was if the applicant vacated the property, could we condition it to revoke back to its present zoning? And I believe the answer's gonna be no, but I may be wrong.
You're not.
Okay.
You can't condition a zone change.
I didn't think we did, could. So that answers your question, we, once it's changed, it's changed.
So there can be no conditions? You mean like it got changed last time, but now it's gonna get changed back? So, there can be no conditions whatsoever?
You're talking apples and oranges, we were talking about a conditional use permit, that's a different mechanism than a zone change.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to support him, but until I know more, I mean, I found out about this eight days ago, ten days ago. Until I knew more about it, I, you know, like I said, I like Mr. Shipman, I met him and his wife, but I, I don't think that we're, I don't think...
You need to stand closer to the mic, please.
I'm sorry, I don't think that we have enough information, I don't, to either support it or deny it, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming up. The applicant, does it, do you have any final closing statement?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. Then I'll close the public portion and turn it over to the commissioners, comment and action.
Do we have any other commissioner comments?
Mr. Sprague?
I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion if there's not.
Yeah, Miss Poole?
Maybe it's just because I didn't get to talk the whole last, the last time. I just wanted to say, I, I can appreciate your concerns, and what you're doing with your family, I think, is really pretty awesome, so let's hope it works, and let's hope your cattle grazing, and that your neighbors love it, and that, that's, that's what would work for all of you. I understand the concerns of the neighbors, but I think what you're trying to do in terms of connecting people to their food is pretty awesome, so best of luck.
Mr. Chairman, that's, Mr. Rui, you have any comments? If that's all the comments, I would make a motion as recommended by staff, recommend the Board of Supervisors to approve the zone change as requested and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in attached draft resolution.
Second.
I have a motion, second to approve, cast your votes.
Four ayes, one absent.
Thank you. Our last item is H, and that is adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.